Good afternoon, welcome. This is a Marion City Council work session for Tuesday, October 6th, 2020. Those of you joining us from home, welcome. And I would like to note that Councilmember Godella is also joining us via Zoom. The first items that are marked for discussion by the staff are on page five. So I will just ask if anyone has anything that they would like to discuss prior to that on the agenda? Pages one through four. Anything in particular that anyone would like to pull out to discuss separately? Okay, then there's item four on page five also. Okay, then we'll proceed with number five. Change order, change order number five for Ratchee Construction.
Yes, Your Honor, so this is the 14th Street. Again, similar to A Avenue. We had a lot of tree debris on the site that was under construction. We moved those items to the right of ways where SDR could then come in and pick them up. But we had to get the debris out of the construction sites so that we could continue with the project. So this is next to St. Joe's. So this is the change order. It is only about half of what the one on A Avenue, there wasn't as much tree debris here as there was on A Avenue. So we just did it as time materials. So there's any questions?
Okay, any questions on that from Mike? It's pretty straightforward. Okay, item number six.
Item number six is, oh, it must have did work. Number six is the liquidated damages charges for the Box Culvert project. So this is just approving the change order for a credit of $28,000.
Okay, so this is a credit against what we owe them? Okay, no questions, I assume? All right, well, we'll move on then with number. Page seven is the next page with items that are marked. So anything prior to that on page five or six? Let's have concern anyone that would like to have questions on? None? Okay, on page seven, under, under engineering, number two is marked. I will turn this item over to the Mayor Protem. It'll be the next two items.
So this is just letting City Council know that because of the conditions of 29th Avenue and Grand Avenue, after we peeled the existing surface off, there was a lot more joint deterioration than we thought there was going to be. So in order to keep under budget, we actually removed 10th Avenue. That's one of the streets that we had to do this year in order to keep under budget. So this is just a change order removing 10th Avenue. And then there are several overages on 29th Avenue and Grand Avenue. And it's all to keep the project within budget.
Any, Will, go ahead.
What section of 10th was supposed to be done?
So it was near the area that we were gonna do next to English Boulevard, I think it is. So we'll just add it to next year's program. So it'll just be later.
That was my next question, I was just gonna get added next year.
Yep. It's already drawn up and everything, so.
Thanks.
All right. Next item will be under the regular agenda. We have a resolution discussion about the internal advance for funding for the urban renewal project. Leanne's gonna come up for that.
There's actually a series of three resolutions regarding the Mojo Properties Development Agreement that was previously approved by Council back in April 2020. Ultimately, the development agreement called for an economic development incentive not to exceed 65,000. Mojo Properties has submitted their request for the 62,500. And so these three resolutions are the administrative proceedings that we would need to do in order to honor that incentive. Any questions?
Any questions, Grant?
Just for my benefit, since I wasn't here in April, can you tell me who Mojo Properties is and what this is specifically going for?
Mojo Properties is Jason Olmstead's company. It's the Bistro 319 building. And the, there are residential units up above. The 62,500 is an incentive so that they could install an elevator. They were having issues leasing the property without an elevator.
Okay, any other questions? Thanks, Leanne.
I do, Steve.
Oh, I'm sorry, Renee, go ahead.
Yep, so can you just explain how it's coming from stormwater management? How that reckons with, you know, it just doesn't seem like an intuitive pot of money to take from.
Okay, typically when we do smaller incentives, we try to internally finance them. And normally, we would look to a utility fund. In this case, we have already done some financings for the public service facility on the sanitary sewer and solid waste funds. And so that would leave urban forest and stormwater utility. Out of the two, the stormwater utility fund has a higher balance and the money is there. So the benefit to the stormwater utility is rather than earning the 0.4% that we are currently earning at Farmer State Bank, it will earn 1%,
So this is all temporary, the money will be put back into that fund as the credits.
The internal loan calls for repayment within two years at an interest rate of 1%. So there's actually a benefit to the city because we're not paying a higher interest rate if we were to do an external financing. And there's a benefit to the utility fund because it's gonna earn more than it would had we not done this.
Okay.
Okay, and then the second part of my question is, this is an internal advance? So it seems like we're getting ahead of what the original schedule was. Can you explain why we're doing that?
It's labeled as an internal advance because we are advancing them, the money upfront, rather than doing it in rebate stream. I don't know if Lon wants to clarify that any further, but that's why it's an advance. And it's an advance from the stormwater fund to the Capital Projects Fund, in which case then in December, I will be requesting dollars from the TIF, from the state for TIF. And so it will come out of tax increment financing.
Do we have any stat, is there a status report on when they're going to install that elevator?
It's already installed. That was the thing. They had to install it and then submit, like I got a whole packet of the invoices and.
Okay.
Thank you for that, yeah, thank you for the clarification, Leanne.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? All right, we'll move the meeting back to the Mayor. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Under Public Services, there's one item that's not marked regarding a payment to Debris Tech. Is that, any questions on that? Okay, otherwise we'll move on to Public Safety. Police Chief is coming up. We have two items that are marked, one looks like for police and one for fire.
I can speak about the foundation too, but not the fire.
Okay.
I'll let Jason come up and do that.
The foundation too, we've talked about this before. We actually got a copy of the agreement to the Mayor to sign. We're ready to move forward. The contract won't start until we have somebody in place, which we're anticipating to be sometime in January. I currently have money in the budget from unfilled positions that we're in the process of filling now for the two officers. I've got feelers out on one state grant, and I know that there's federal grants available after the first of the year. So I'm hopeful that we're gonna be able to pay for this with grant money. But I would like to get the process started now. It'll be a monthly payment, we're talking about $65,000 a year. I know there's multiple departments that are looking for one of these positions. So I kinda wanna beat everybody to the punch and get the cream of the crop, so to speak. Not to say that people that come afterwards are not good, but I wanna kinda get the jump on everybody else and get it started. About 5% of our calls are mental health calls. I did the math. We spent about 7,000 hours in the last five years on mental health calls and transports alone. I think this is gonna greatly reduce what we have to do as officers, but it's gonna provide a service to the community that we just can't give by ourselves. We're just not qualified to do it. So I think it's a good endeavor and would ask that you allow us to move forward with it.
Any questions on that, yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Chief, I talked with Lon about this a little bit in terms of a day in the life of the law enforcement liaison. Will, will this person be, will this be an eight to four, eight to 4:30 position? Will this be on call? Will this be 24/7 with different people? Give me a sense of sort of the staffing profile. And then also, how might they respond when we identify there's, there's a mental health need or intervention?
Yep, so Foundation Two will be here Thursday to kinda give you a rundown on sort of how it works in Cedar Rapids and how we envision ours. It'll be a full-time position, they will be a contract, they will screen people, they'll advertise, screen people for the proper background and experience. And then they'll send those people to us to interview. We'll probably have them go on ride-alongs to kinda get a feel from our officers whether they'll fit in with us. But the plan is it's a full-time job in our department. We'll have an office set up for them down right next to the roll call room. And they'll have a radio and they'll respond. I think initially, they'll probably go out with an officer. But after they familiarize themselves with the people in the community, especially the ones we deal with on an ongoing basis, and we know it's not a violent situation, they can start responding on their own. We can have the dispatchers send the call directly to them.
Right, well, you answered an important question there in my mind. And that is that our officers would tag team with them if, if it's a violent situation and there needs to potentially be some intervention that way.
Yep, and they do, I think the big part of it is that they can do follow-up that we just can't do right now. So if somebody gets sent to the hospital or they see somebody at night, they can circle back around the next day, make sure they're taking their meds, making sure they made their appointment, or if they need to reassess what they need, which is something again that we just can't do. The on-call stuff, they've got a mobile crisis unit that will respond to after-hours. I think we're kinda flexible on our days or on our times right now for the liaison person. I would guess somewhere around nine or 10:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night, simply because a lot of the treatment facilities and the doctors and things only have daytime hours. And we wanna have them available because that's kinda what they bring to the table is that resume of people to help.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, yes, go ahead.
Excuse me, Chief, can you tell us a little bit? Will they require any additional equipment that would need to be purchased? What about vehicles? Do they use their own personal vehicle? Do they use anything that would be outside of what we can already equip them with internally?
Yeah, we'll give up, just a radio. They're working on a vehicle right now. In the past, they've, they've driven their own vehicle and Foundation Two is just reimbursing for the mileage. I think they're trying to get away from that. I did check with Leanne and we checked with our insurance carrier. If they had to, they could drive a city vehicle. We've got a couple of extra older squad cars that we have that are unmarked if it came down to it. But Foundation Two told me they're actively looking to either purchase a car or rent one for the person.
Okay, great, thank you. Other questions for the Chief? Yeah, go ahead, Steve. Yeah, first of all, I'm very glad that we're moving ahead in this direction. I think it's gonna be an excellent addition to the city, to the residents, and to your police force. But also having them in the building, I think is an excellent step to allow for the interaction. So to me, this is a huge step forward based upon everything that's been happening in the society today. So congratulations.
Thank you, we're excited.
Yeah, thank you for being proactive on that and leading in that, in that area. So thank you. Any other questions for the Chief? Okay, thank you. Next item is resolution approving a purchase of fire hose replacement.
Hello. As you all, if you all recall, I was here in August to explain some of the defects we found on our fire hose and things. And I promised to move forward with a replacement process and plan for this. I apologize for the delay, but the storm and everything. And I wanna run this through Budget and Lon as well to let them know kind of what the dollar amount we'd be looking at. In the resolution, you see it says $26,010. However, there is $10,000 that was budgeted this year for fire hose. So the overage is actually $16,010. To accommodate some things that Finance has requested, I put emails out to vendors to see if any other vendors dealt with this, the hose that we're looking at that Hyman is offering, which is a North American Hose Company hose. Two of them replied back no, and the third refused to respond. So this is pretty much a localized vendor because we spoke about single-source purchasing at our last meeting that I attended. It seemed like most councils in favor of that. So I put together a recommendation of a 50/50 split on hose replacement, 50% of our hose now. And then I think with our hose and the dates of our hose and purchases, we can hold off on the other 50% to come in within five years. And then we can do it on a five-year rotation, which then falls in line with a manufacturer's 10-year warranty. And when warranty be coming out, then it'd be time for hose to be replaced at that time. Additionally, I emailed this to Budget as well, and Zach didn't have any pushback or anything. We filled out a budget adjustment request form for this budget for that $6,010. So I've got that accomplished as well. So excuse me, Council approved.
Hey, questions? Mr. Mayor? Yes, go ahead, yeah.
Jason, one of the components we talked about is the quality of the hose that you're buying at this point. So is this hitting a higher, higher quality, more durable hose?
Yeah, yep, and it's gonna fall along the lines of the rubber jacketed. We haven't decided totally yet on the nylon versus polyester, but looking at a nylon jacketed rubber-lined hose versus the poly interior.
Okay, other questions for our Deputy Chief?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Back to Engineering. Number one is marked for discussion, so.
Yes, Your Honor, so the first one is a resolution of support renaming Squaw Creek to Wannaty Creek. Most of you were in attendance when Executive Director Dennis Gomack came and gave a presentation for One County Conservation. So if you've seen the news recently, they have moved forward with theirs. And so they're asking us to follow through with. It seemed that all council that was here during that meeting was in support of the name change. So this is the actual resolution of support. Again, we don't actually make the change. US Geology Service makes the change if they decide to. But this is our resolution of support.
Questions on that? Yes, go ahead, Will.
Has the county already requested the name change with the?
No, our, our resolution, and so will Cedar Rapids' resolution. So they've, they've done their ordinance or their resolution at the board level, but they haven't actually sent it in because they want the other resolutions with it. They may have already changed the park name, but I don't know if they've. And that's completely under their purview to do.
Yeah, that's been done. Other questions on that item? All right, number two.
Number two is a motion received filed and discussed a petition that we received. There we go. So this is the area that the petitioner has requested some modifications be made. This is Lucor Road, just call it northwest of Indian Creek Road. Basically, the Hunter's Ridge area is kinda secluded. They're not connected to the rest of the city with the trail network. The existing bridge that is there is a county bridge. You can see that the county line actually goes between the bridge there. There's still a lot on the west side and the east side that are still completely within the county. So this is at the, at the boundary lines. This bridge is not designed for pedestrian or bike traffic on it. This is a county bridge. It still does have some life left on it to continue to, to have the vehicle traffic on it. So it is not our recommendation to send this to Tac just because the likely, the legal ramifications of signing for use of a structure, and Legal can correct me, but because it doesn't meet standards, if we were to put a sign or paint out there encouraging the use of this bridge when it's not designed for that use, puts us at a larger risk of liability. Um, as far as we could fill out a CIP sheet, I can tell you, and I put in the memo that there's a couple of bridges that are higher priority, being Albernett and Tower Terrace, rather than refab. This bridge or a pedestrian bridge could be added. But again, that's a $200,000 to $300,000 ticket item. So at this point, staff isn't sure where this petition should go. So we're looking for a policy decision from City Council on what you would like to do with this petition. The city arborist has or will go out there and take care of the, the trees. But other than that, as far as signing, painting, or adding a new bridge, staff would like some direction.
Okay, so on Thursday's agenda, you, you want an actual?
So if you just read it how it is, you'll receive file discuss. The trees will be trimmed and that will be it. The petition will go no further. If you want it to go to Tac, you'll have to modify it to read to refer to Tac. Or if you want us to create a CIP sheet, you can do that as well. And then it'll be ranked against the other CIP projects. I don't think this need or want is gonna go away, but I can tell you that there's higher priorities right now.
Sure. So we need to solicit what opinions of what people would like to see on Thursday's agenda to get some sort of a consensus in terms of, do our, do the council members want to refer to Tac? They wanna just file, accept it and file it? Or, or add it to the CIP? All right, go ahead, Steve. Yeah, question, so, I mean, I, when you drive out there, definitely you see people walking on that bridge. If there's traffic going in both directions, that is extremely tight. So I think, I understand the concern and the request for wanting to do something in that area. And I also understand the prioritization. But clarify your comment about the county. So that entire bridge and that, that section is 100% county right there?
Half and half. So the dash line that's hashed is actually county, the stuff that's not hashed is city.
Okay.
So it's half in the city, half in the county.
So is there a request to the county?
The request is only to the city at this point. I have spoken with the county engineer and he is under the same impression that I am as far as what he would or would not want to do. Because again, it's joint jurisdiction.
Yeah, that makes it a little more, a little more complicated as well.
Yep.
Yeah, so I, I mean, again, I understand the request. Aside from putting, redoing the bridge, or I didn't even see, there's not even a really good way to put a walkway off to the, you'd have to put a whole new pedestrian bridge, which would be fairly expensive. Okay, $1,000. Yeah, yeah, so, okay, right, thanks. Councilmember Brandt?
Sure, have the trees been trimmed yet? I know we talked about this before the storm. I don't know if they've been addressed yet.
So I know it was on the work program before we had our storm. And Mike Sembridge, the arborist, was gonna put it back in his work program to.
It has been done, it looks, yeah, Seth's saying yes, it's been done already, okay. I think I would, how many years do you think that bridge still has in life?
At least 20 years.
Oh, okay. I wouldn't be opposed.
We just put an HMA overlay on top of it, so.
Sure, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing the pedestrian bridge and a, in the CIP. I mean, it's, it could be five years out still, but just having it put into the CIP.
Yeah, that was gonna be my question, is there anything wrong with adding it to the CIP even though it's gonna be low priority with having it on there?
No, just.
If we see that there is a need for it, I don't.
I would just make sure that both the, the council and the petitioners understand that just because on the CIP does not mean next year we're installing it.
Oh, yeah, exactly, there's a lot of things on the CIP, yeah. And I'm just asking the question, I'm not, you can convince me that it shouldn't be on there, but I, I'm just, I was just asking the question, but can we let everybody have a turn and then we'll come back?
Sure, sure, yeah.
Go ahead, Randy, you were next. Oh, you're good, okay.
Mike, what, does the county engineer have an opinion about the signage as a means to at least provide some modicum of enhanced safety for any pedestrians?
Just with the email correspondence, again, by promoting the use of the bridge for non-intended uses, he agreed that if somebody's gonna walk across the bridge, fine. But if we put up a sign that says warning pedestrians using bridge, we're kinda opening the floodgates for potential liability. Because we're saying, use the bridge, we know it's not under any kinda safety protocol.
I guess, I, so one line of logic really makes me appreciate that. I'm, I'm worried about the fact that there has been a petition from pedestrians who are actively using it. In fact, I think there's, there's sidewalk that comes up to the bridge on both sides.
And we purposely then tied those back into each other because we knew that going farther south was not acceptable.
Well, I guess, um, but Indian Creek, the old Indian Creek Road extending to the, to the southwest is now a prime walkway. I, I guess what I'm just worried about is we have the active and present utilization by pedestrians. And so it seems like there ought to be some warning to drivers to expect that or to be looking for that versus a surprise on the bridge deck.
And City Council can direct staff to do whatever you want up there. As City Council, you are the policymakers.
Let's, Clint, do you have anything?
I do now.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
So.
Renee, you're next.
Along those same lines, what I'm hearing from you is that Legalists, we have from Legal telling us that, that opens us up for liability, is that accurate?
I was concurring with Mr. Mark really pretty much on the fly. I haven't been consulted on this since as far as I know. Mike, have you checked with Carol on this?
No.
So this is, I'm giving you an educated legal opinion, I'm not giving you a research legal opinion.
So that would.
You need time to actually look into that issue, to come on and act with legal.
So that would help in my decision-making based on, as I'm listening to the questions that are being asked here. And right knowing we don't necessarily have the funds, right? The level of priority in order to build a new bridge or to build a pedestrian bridge. Yet we do have plenty of walkers out there. So if we could put up some type of alert and we weren't putting ourselves, there wasn't liability associated with that, I would certainly be in support of that. But I don't feel like I know that answer today.
Sure, so we can change it to refer it to Legal for legal opinion back as well.
That's an idea. Renee, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. I've been working with Vicky Bowman on this and advised her to create this petition. And, you know, after driving by, you know, I totally agree with the comments that have been made. I think we need to do more than just trim the trees. And I understand that we have a bunch of competing priorities. But this area is only going to grow to the north and the south from a residential standpoint. And if this bridge has 20 more years, I think the least we can do is put some signage there. I didn't hear a word that Ryan said, so I don't know if his mic just doesn't work or he's not near one. So I don't wanna make him repeat everything and I will be there on Thursday. But, you know, I feel like we need to do more than just trimming the trees here. There are bikers, there are walkers, there are people with strollers that go by. And, I mean, there is, I went on Winslow Bridge today because we got another issue about the speed limit there. And that bridge is already tight and it's a lot wider than this one. So I, I'm for the, I'm looking at the request on the agenda. And I'm for the tree trimming, the speed signs, and the warning devices. I had talked with Mike about this a few weeks ago. And I understand that a pedestrian bridge is pretty much out of the question for now. But I think that what's on the agenda is at the minimum what we should do. And I agree with Will that it should go on a CIP so that when we look at that and look at all of. And I agree with Will that it should go on a CIP so that when we look at that and look at all of our competing priorities, then we can rank this accordingly. Lastly, I believe that Mrs. Baumann will be joining on Thursday to speak during public comments and answer any more specific questions. If people have those for her as a resident in the area.
Okay, and just for your benefit, what Ryan said was that he hadn't researched the issue but could do that for us, so.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, we'll go back to Will and then, and then Steve, you had a follow-up comment?
Yes. Oh, so if you don't put up pedestrians on bridge type of signs, can other signs be put up potentially maybe lowering the speed limit there? Because it's 35 through there, correct?
We would have to do a speed study to determine if that was justified. Again, anything that comes from TAC, I can give you a recommendation to raise or lower a speed limit. You don't always have to go with tax recommendation.
Right.
Ultimately, again, you guys are the policyholders and you tell us what to do.
Right, so potentially lower the speed limit sign or there could be, and have flashing lights on it type of thing until a bridge is built. And then, oh, since it's trail, technically trail connection, north and south of that. Some MPO funds or something to help build a bridge?
It's not in the physically constrained plan.
It could be added or we could request it in the.
You could, it would be six plus years.
Yeah.
And right now, the bridge wouldn't be, if, if we built it on the east side, which is where the side path is, it's actually in the county.
And so we need to put sidewalk on there, yeah.
Well, I mean, six plus years, but I mean, it could be six plus years for us to get to it if we, if we put it on our, on our CIP. So again, could it hurt? I don't know.
Right, it's just the MPO will rank it and they may not put it in the physically constrained plan. If it's not in the physically constrained plan, you can't apply for funding.
Right.
So.
We could try.
You certainly can.
Steve? Yeah, and I think I want to make sure we're 100% clear when we talk about adding this to the CIP. What we're really saying is to give it consideration as a CIP project under the normal factors on how we prioritize and rate and grade all of those. So it may make it in, it may not. It's just going to be one of those projects that'll be under consideration for the CIP. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
It could be on the not funded list.
Right, okay, but it'll be at least out there in front of us as a.
Potential project.
As a potential project, just like some of the others are out there. And they may not grade out in 2021, but it may grade out in the future.
Thank you. Okay, Randy has a comment?
Yes, I would like to just throw a couple of things out there as well, too, after listening to some of this here. I would like to see the petitioner forward this to the county. Because I would like to make sure that we're putting the right documentation in the right order here. So this does, you know, prevail over on the county side. So I would like for them to send this to the county and create that documentation. Though I am not a lawyer, posting signs of beware of dog obviously does impose that the owner does identify a threat and a potential liability. And I, I will be anxious to hear what Legal says on this because I follow in the same vein of that. When we identify something that could be a threat, it could be a potential case for us in the future. So I would caution us to be very careful. I don't want to take away the safety from the pedestrians, but this, this, we are talking about territory that's in the county. This is out of our jurisdiction unless we decide to override that. So I, I would like, I think this needs to start at the county level and, and work its way back to us for a final consideration. But we're being asked to build something that doesn't reside in our, our jurisdiction, so. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else with any thoughts on this? So. Do we, do we need to?
Mike, you either leave it as is or I can say, receive, file and refer it to Legal for an illegal opinion coming back.
That's probably the minimum we should do at this point, you know, and then there would be people have more time to think about it while we get the legal opinion. And, you know, maybe talk to the county, who knows? Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have forwarded on the legal issue to Kara, so she is looking into it. I don't know if she'll have that answer by the end of tonight's council meeting, but she should have it by Thursday.
Thank you. Any, any additional comments on that item? Okay, so now we have number three.
All right, so item three and four are connected. Three is receive, file and discuss the TAC report. This was a petition that was received back in 2019. And because it was late in the year, they felt that if they waited until summertime, they would get higher pedestrian counts. So they asked the city to wait until the summer. While we had summer help here before the derecho, we did do both physical counts of the pedestrians crossing at Newcastle and Boyson. And we had our classifiers out there to look at the vehicles. There's a detailed TAC report in there. The recommendation is to add a pedestrian crossing signage similar to this one that's just west on Boyson Road. And to paint the crosswalk and then to add a CIP sheet for consideration for the additional improvements as outlined in the TAC report, which is the culvert that's at the bottom of the hill of Boyson to extend that, to add the curb and gutter. And to add more sidewalk on the north side and the intersection of Albernett. And Boyson Road would become a signalized intersection as part of the Albernett Road improvements. Number four then is basically directing staff to then proceed with those actions.
Okay, questions on that?
And this has been sent to all the petitioners and they will be able to comment on Thursday.
I know over time I've been asked about that one repeatedly, so. Any other, any comments on that? Okay, numbers five through 11 are not marked for discussion. Any particular questions on any of those items? Okay, number 12.
Number 12 is regarding the cleanup for 525 11th and 520 12th Street. When this was written as either a demo or relocation, it was an understanding from staff's perspective that cleanup of the remnant parcels would be taken care of as part of that. We have now understood that that is not the intention of the person moving the buildings. So that area needs to be cleaned up so that we can continue with the library project. So we are still working through with Boomerang and Bush the change order. It will likely be done as a time and materials, so we'll likely remove this for Thursday. We'll do the time material similar to how we did A Avenue and 14th Street. And then we will come back with that once the cleanup is done. So Bush will monitor the materials that are used, the time and machinery that is used. We get their rate sheets and each day that work is completed, a representative from Bush and a representative from Boomerang will sign off. These are the hours, this is the equipment, this is the material that was used. And that way it's not a guessing game because it is hard to come up with an estimate on something like this. It's not very typical.
Okay, questions on that? You want to come up?
Just thank you, Mike, for your help with this. The, the only thing I want to add to this particular change order is just for transparency purposes that this, this also depends on the removal of the other house. My understanding right now is that that, that house is projected to move on the 23rd of October. I did ask for an estimate from Bush on kind of what, what it would cost and what are the implications if we don't meet that deadline? And there are, again, just substantial financial implications if we don't meet that October 23rd deadline. It's about $2,500 a day for Bush construction and remobilizing the project schedule could be anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000. So just want to make sure that everyone understands that there are some pretty significant financial impacts for the second house move.
Yes, go ahead, Grant.
So does that suggest that Boomerang's work would be potentially delayed until that house is moved?
Yes. So Boomerang is, is, was the subcontractor selected for the library project. And we, the city approached our project team to see if we could do this change order to assist in the cleanup of the houses. Boomerang is going to do everything they can to stay on schedule, of course. But there are other subcontractors that are lined up to come right behind them. So if, for whatever reason, that house doesn't get moved, if the second house delays, it will delay Boomerang in being able to do the prep work that they need to do for the rest of the subcontractors to come behind them. So we, our original schedule for this was October 1st and so we're just trying to catch up. Is that, I'm sorry, did that answer a question?
Yeah, it does. So there's a linkage there. There's a dependency that flows through. So the houses, one of the houses became a delayed critical milestone that we talked about earlier.
Yes, sir.
And, and now we're facing that. Is, do we have any belief that the house can move earlier than the 23rd?
I have no belief in that. That's, we've been given a pretty hard date of the 23rd.
But if it, if it does happen on the 23rd, there's no consequences?
Yeah, I, I mean, as long as Boomerang can get right in there, everything is well, is weather dependent, right? And so this project and the schedule for our project is trying to get in, we're trying to beat winter weather, right? So certainly if there's rain, if there's, oh lord, snow in October, you know, there, it's 2020, who knows? But certainly it's all weather dependent. And so in the base, best case scenario, the house moves on the 23rd, there's no weather implications, we keep going. If there are weather implications that delay that, then we, we start having daily financial impacts to the project.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike, do we have any pass-through fees associated to the recipient of that house? We know what the history has proven with this and I know things weren't uncontrollable. But the city also needs to remain neutral with this transaction. So what do we have on slate here for a non-compliant transfer on the 23rd?
So as a part of the original agreement, we were the city going to pay that applicant $100,000 to help it with the relocation. I believe he is now refusing that payment, so he's kind of knowing that things are delayed.
Declining is probably a better word, yeah.
Other than that, no.
So the city is not going to.
I'm aware of that.
Contribute to $100,000 incentive.
Right, but we still have a property that needs to be moved off property, which is considerably late. So that's my concern and I want to make sure there's transparency on that as well, too, that these houses were supposed to have been moved last year as well, so. And if the city is, you know, if our project has those, those expenses built into it, they should be passed through. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to ask if that amended contract or agreement that we have on there has anything in there?
I'll let Lon speak to.
Randy, are you referring to an agreement with Boomerang or an agreement with, with Seven Hills?
Seven Hills.
Yeah, with them declining it, they have not signed the agreement. And so unless they were to execute it, the city's not beholden to the terms in that agreement.
So with them voluntarily amending our contract, though, even though they're not recipients of that monies, we're still, we, are you saying we do or don't have a viable contract now?
We do not have a contract with Seven Hills. We approved it, the city signed off on it, but they have, as the mayor said, they've declined it and have not returned the signed copy. So we don't have an executed agreement with them.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Grant.
Is, is the root cause of the problem that the house mover has a finite set of materials, jacks, timbers, et cetera, that are still tied up on the other house and getting it positioned? That is in the way of getting the second house moved? And I, I'm just trying to understand sort of what, what the imped, the causing, the causative impediment is.
I'm going to invite Mr. Trehan into this conversation. I, I do know that that was a contingency in that, in the early stages, Mr. Harper, but I'm not sure where they are. I'm getting the house off set equipment.
Yeah, so I was able to kind of track down the manager for Goodwin, I think it was the owner actually, and he and I had a conversation. There are some of the jacks that were in the original building that, or in the first building that had to be removed. And you can't just, this is all my understanding, by the way, I'm not, anyway. I'm sure you're going to claim to be a professional on this, but apparently the jack system were, were being used to slowly release the pressure that would build onto the foundation over a period of time. When I met with them last week, they did make some indication that they were going to be out clearing around the foundation. They had a contract where somebody would come home and poke the holes in it for the beams to go in, which I think they've done thus far. Everything that he's told me, he's, he's done in accordance with that. Now granted, this was just a verbal conversation and that, that's where it ended. That they would be over here and trying to get that thing jacked up. And there's a timeframes associated with how that works and they had indicated they'd move it on the 22nd or 23rd. So I, I don't believe they have dual equipment to be doing them at the same time. But I know that the, the project manager with Bush and the representative of Goodwin, we're, we're speaking last week and I believe they worked together on that conversation, so. But outside, there, there's no agreement or anything like that in place, so.
Go ahead, Will.
So since there is no agreement with Seven Hills, who is the deed holder of this house and who is the deed holder of the house that already moved? Or I don't, I guess I don't know how that works if the house moved.
There's no deed on the house that moved.
Yeah, the deed would be for the underlying property and not for the house itself. That would be just property to be removed. I would have to check and see, I believe we did a whole harmless to allow them to do salvage, but I'd have to, to check on that. As long as it's on our property, we do still have it named as an insured parcel for us. So until such time as it's removed, we do have coverage on it.
Other questions? Comments? Okay. Items 13 through 26 are not marked for discussion. Any questions on those?
There are several items in there for the library.
They're all provided.
I was just, Mike's been helping me with these. These are all payments. I will not be here in person on Thursday night, but I'll be on the phone should there be any questions.
Any questions on items 13 through 26? Okay, move on to number 27.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a motion directing staff request. We remove assistance from the NRCS, Natural Resources Conservation Service for cleaning up debris and the waterways from the derecho storm and stabilization of the, the waterways within the city boundaries. So obviously there's a little bit of debris out there that still needs to be cleaned up. Our understanding is this could be, because this is separate funding from FEMA funding, that this could be part of our match. So there's a lot of information in your packet about the, the facts and the, there's a 25% match, but that could be in-kind services as well. Because it, it could potentially be over law's threshold, we're running it through council.
Questions, discussion? Okay, on to number 28.
So, 28 is the project calendar for the 35th and 7th Avenue improvements. This is the new traffic signal to replace existing traffic signal that's there, extending Linden Drive to the south so that we have the right-in, right-out at that intersection. So, this then allows us on Friday to release the plans and for the plans to go out to bid for construction next year. So, it has an engineer's estimate of 775,641 sealed bids were received November 10th of 2020, late start date of June 21st of 2021, 55 working days, and $1,000 per day in liquidated damages.
Okay. Questions on that? Go ahead, Grant.
Just a comment. For the number of times I've been through that intersection over the years, it seems like there is a complete inability for drivers to figure out how that really works. I would even say it exceeds the mystery of your routine roundabout that people have had a hard time adjusting to. So, I am very excited about this project getting done.
And you weren't on council at the time, but we did have a T-SIP study that was done, and then we applied. We do have some grant funding from the DOT to help make these improvements as well.
Okay, anything else on that item? Okay, under community development, first item is not marked. Number two.
Don't believe, I got a graphic, I'll get that for Thursday to Rachel for the PowerPoint presentation, but I believe in your packet the information was provided for SNS storage. I believe I walked through this a little bit in the set date for the public hearing at the last meeting as well. This is a storage facility proposed to go out on, in the MEC. It's a little unique in storage in that it's kind of in a self-contained gated area where all the doors are kind of internal, and you can do loading and unloading within an enclosed structure from your vehicle, and it's a two-story facility. So, I wouldn't, I wasn't planning to walk through the whole thing unless there's questions. I think there was a pretty detailed staff report on the item. I'll make sure there's graphics.
Questions on that item? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Tom, wasn't, wasn't this originally slated to go into one of those tier-one lots?
Um.
For some reason, and it's, it's not essential to our disposition.
Yeah, I mean, I think there was a looking around of where best to cite the facility, yeah.
Thank you.
Your question, is this the same project?
Yeah, well, I guess that's it. It seems to me, first look at it that we had, it was in a tier, tier-one lot with having to allow that for a tier-one, but now it seems like it's moved to a tier-two location. I don't know if it materially changes the project, it changes the location. I know I might be completely wrong about that recollection.
Yeah, I mean, I think there may have been an evaluation of whether to go into tier-one or tier-two, but ultimately it ended in tier-two. I wasn't involved in a lot of the specifics on that.
Okay. Any additional comments or questions on that item? Okay, next item is another public hearing on Hy-Vee Isles online facility.
Similarly, the, I detailed the project at the last city council meeting and identified the site plan and illustration. I'll make sure that's in the packet for the presentation on Thursday, the overhead, but I believe the council received the detailed information. So, the building would be placed on the, on the west side of Hy-Vee on 35th, and it'd actually be a standalone building, and it does meet the design standards and requirements as set out in the original zoning, the planned development district there. That's why we're looking at it from a public hearing perspective, so. We've not heard any comments from adjacent property owners, and we didn't, it was approved by the planning commission and recommended.
Okay, questions on that? All right, number eight is not marked. Any questions on that, temporary easement for Marion Brush? Basically continuing the same use as the, that the tenant had, right?
That's correct, yeah, it's transferring from Marion Janitorial to Marion Brush, yep.
Okay. No questions on that item, then we'll move on to library. There are three items that are marked.
Okay, so, the first one that we have is a contract amendment with Fuel for the library virtual branch, AKA the website. We last year put a RFP out into the universe for help with our marketing and brand promise, and we went through the, the normal RFP process. During that process, the, the responses that we got back were within Lon's control of money, so it was less than $15,000. And so, we moved forward and been working with Fuel throughout the year on our brand promise and some brand images that we can use for the library to support our current city branding, to us, for us to be able to extend that. Our current website right now is programmed and hosted by Drupal, which is, is not a common platform for a library and organization to be able to maintain themselves. We had someone a few iterations ago, several years ago in the library that was pretty schooled up on this and then moved on, and then we've been doing some outside consulting with this, and we've gotten to the point now, especially with a lot of changes and the need to update the website, that we just aren't able to do that on our own and are having to outsource this quite a bit. So, the idea is to bring that back in-house. We'd like to move this to a WordPress platform that will allow our staff to be able to go in and make updates along the way. So, we did, during the original RFP process, have language in there about the ability to be forward with some website design in the future, and we'd like to amend that contract with Fuel and accept their approach. They have offered us a two-pronged approach. The first one is really just, let's get this thing in a format that you guys can work on, which is that WordPress format. They would be basically taking all of our content that we currently have now and converting it over to WordPress so that we could immediately start making those updates. And then, there's a couple of more things that we can do sort of in phase two. I apologize, I don't have it in front of me. Hopefully you guys do. I think the total package is about $28,000 in total, the first phase around the $20,000 mark. It's going to completely change our ability to update the website and get the information out to our public.
Questions? Go ahead, Grant.
So, utilizing WordPress as the, as the platform, Fuel's scope is basically to transition all of the existing content assets and current, I'll say, content structure into that environment so that ultimately what, what your staff can do is then be self-maintaining in that environment?
Exactly.
And what is, what is their long-term engagement for this, or is it just initial build-out of the site?
Yeah, it really just is initial build-out. That first phase is to get the immediate transfer over. We do think that there's a little bit more help that they can do with us to kind of visualize and build out some more structure, streamline our structure, help us with that a little bit. It's not a long-term engagement at all. We have internal technology staff now that can maintain that for us, and then our new marketing and community relations specialist is very well-versed in WordPress, and will be able to do all that we need to do on an ongoing basis.
All right, thank you. Did you, did you mention the cost? Sorry.
I think that the total is right around $28,000 for both phase one and phase two.
Okay, and the report says you have, you have the money to pay for it?
We do, yes. This, the dollars are coming out of our special revenue that we had this set aside to do last year, but because of COVID and all of the changes, we put that on hold as a part of our budget amendment to roll those dollars over to this year.
Go ahead.
Just a quick question that came to mind. Will WordPress work with any of your other software systems? So, will it integrate right as you think about the new library and, I don't know, reservation software platform? You know, just that integration piece, is there any concern with that?
Absolutely, yes. That's a, I'm glad that you brought that up because that is a big driver of this. Right now, we don't, we only have one third-party software that we use that integrates with that, which is our online catalog. Moving forward into the new libraries, we start to talk about online room reservations and those types of things. This is going to be even more critical, and WordPress will work much more smoothly than what we have now.
Anything else? Okay, number two.
Number two is really exciting. I'm really going to turn it over to Lon to talk about it. This is an agreement between the Enhance Iowa Board and the City of Marion. I just wanted to let you guys know, this is very exciting. We made the final presentation to the CAT, the CAT Committee during the week after the derecho, and I was sitting in here in the EOC listening to the presentation. There were 15 other projects that were brought forward to the Enhance Iowa Board at the same time of this project, and the library was one of the top three recipients of dollars. So, there were three of us that received $450,000, which was significantly over what the other 12 recipients put forward. So, we're really proud of the presentation that we put forward, and I'll let Lon talk a little bit about the agreement.
Yeah, the Community Attraction and Tourism Program is one that Marion has successfully utilized many times. We tapped into it to build the Arts and Environment Center out at Lough Park. It was also instrumental in us being able to complete the amphitheater at Lough. You look around the community at other agencies that have received awards, the YMCA received an award, Prospect Meadows received an award, but it's intended to provide funding for a catalytic project for the community. And so, the library put in an application. As Holly said, we were successful in receiving $450,000, which I believe was not only top three, but the highest one that they gave to any individual applicant this year. As far as the contract itself, our former city attorney always referred to these as the golden rule contracts because the state has the money and they make the rules in the contracts. So, we've never been able to successfully change the terms in one of the contract agreements with IEDA. But essentially, what they will do is they will make the award to the project. They do allow us to inject it as cash during construction, so we'll be able to draw against that, and that, of course, assists us. We don't have to arrange for construction financing. We don't lose ground on interest on pledges or anything like that by being able to apply these dollars. So, it was a big lift, a big help on the capital campaign as well.
One caveat to this agreement is that we have 90 days after we sign the agreement to finish our capital campaign. So, if you all, we went public with our capital campaign at the groundbreaking on Friday, and it was very intentional to align with this 90-day. We do believe that there will be a little bit of grace on the 90 days because of the derecho and what we've been going through, but we're working very closely with IEDA on this.
Questions, comments? Congratulations on the award.
Thank you.
All right, number three.
The last one is an amendment to our contract addendum for our lease with Craig and Priscilla over at our 7th Avenue location. First of all, I just want to give a ton of thanks to Craig and Priscilla. They have been very gracious in accommodating us. We had a different layout or a different amount of square footage that we were going to rent, and they ended up expanding that for us at no cost, which is wonderful. So, that expanded square footage is now a part of this addendum, as well as the original addendum had Craig and Priscilla covering all of utilities and us reimbursing. And we decided because of the way that their facility is set up, they can segregate our utilities, water, and all of that. So, we, we think it'd just be cleaner for that to be put in our name, so we have worked to get that into our name. Their apartment and everything is separate now from the library and what we're using. And so, this addendum just covers all of that, and that, those costs now will be covered by us.
Questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, on to the COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the city continues to cope with the fallout from COVID-19, we stayed in communication with the other local area governments about plans for reopening. As of the visit this afternoon, there's been no alteration in plans for reopening, but I wanted to provide you a little bit of context about why. We keep, we've been talking quite a bit about taking a look at the, at the potential to not be opening to a normal public business or more normal public business until after the first of the year. And so, I asked Rachel to put a couple of slides from Lynn County Public Health's live website about viral activity in the area, and this is one of the ones that we key in on. And so, this one has confirmed cases by, by category. So, it's cumulative. It shows the, the number of cases that are reported over time. But one of the things that we'll keep an eye on in determining the phasing of where Lynn County is at is the gap between the blue and the green line. Councilman Brand rightly pointed out that there were a lot of recovered cases in Lynn County, and that's something to celebrate. But if you take a look at the gap between the top of the blue and the green, that's the number of active cases in the community at any given point in time. So, it's not necessarily that we have more deaths or anything like that related to it, but it does indicate that there's a much higher level of viral activity, which means that there's substantially more opportunities for exposure, and that's what we're trying to control here in the building. When you look at the size of our departments, we simply don't have the number of staff that we could afford to have three people in building inspection or three of our engineering inspectors have to quarantine because they were accidentally exposed by someone coming in from, as a member of the public into the building. So, we'll take a look at that as a measure of just overall viral activity in the community. If you can go to the second one. And this one is a little hard to read on here. I would encourage you, if you want to see them in more detail, visit Lynn County Public Health's website. But this one I wanted to bring in because it shows the number of reported cases. And the reason I brought this one up is the number of confirmed cases. That blue line, the tallest one over there to the right, that was October 1st. 96 confirmed cases, that's the highest one that Lynn County has had since this whole thing began. So, I don't know what the causal relationship, if it's school getting back in session, organized sports, but the prior record for that was 94, and that was the, about a week after the Labor Day weekend. So, again, just when you start to look at the trends, the overall trend line unfortunately continues to move in the wrong direction. When, again, if you look at their website, you'll be able to see that the overall trend line just continues to move up, and that's concerning. We just want to make sure that for the general safety of the staff and for continuity of operations for the city being a fairly lean-staffed organization, we want to do everything we can to make sure that we're managing potential exposure.
Questions for Lon?
And, yes, go ahead. Lon, can you just, I'm sorry, my, my mind's not tracking here. The deceased red line indicates it's at the, it's at the peak of each one of those bar graphs. Can you, am I looking at that wrong, or is that, that's not clearly identifying the number of deaths?
Yeah, that's how they code it, but if you were to see, I mean, the, for example, for the, from 10-4 to 10-10, the current week, there haven't been any deaths reported. The week prior to that, there were four. So far, in the last six weeks, the one that had the most was from 9-13 to 9-19 where there were eight deaths associated with COVID.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wasn't seeing the correlation on this particular graph here, but thank you.
The lag time between diagnosis and when someone might actually pass away sometimes makes the data a little bit fuzzy. If you go look at this in its raw form on the website and hover your mouse over those color indicators, it will give you the number.
Other questions for Lon on that? And everyone is aware, we did put out the advisory proclamation. Okay. All right, that brings us to the end of the agenda. Thank you, everyone. Have a good day.